...from Dr. James L. Please come forward.
Shall we pray? Eternate Rock of Ages, we want to bless your majesty in the name of Jesus. We want to thank you, Father, because the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the inhabitant and everything that do a derring. Thank you for the city of Greenville. Thank you for the mayor. Thank you for the council members. Thank you for the citizens of Greenville. Accept our thanks in Jesus' name. Father, Lord, we pray as the name Greenville is. Green means vitality. Green means fertility. Green means life. Green means harmony. We pray, oh God, that this city of Greenville, there be peace, there be harmony, there be vitality, there be freshness, there be blessings. Father, Lord, as we open this meeting this day, oh God, we pray that the heavens be open upon Greenville in the name of Jesus. Bless the people of Greenville. Bless the business people. Bless the families. And, Father, let the joy of Greenville continue perpetually and let your light shine upon us. We ask all this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you very much, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of proclamations tonight. Highway Masters Riding Club, if you come forth, please. How are you? No, I'm good. We, the mayor and the city council of Greenville, Texas, do hereby recognize the Highway Masters Riding Club. Whereas the Highway Masters Riding Club is a biking community that supports charities and each other, whereas the biking community pulls together and donates to the needy in the community, whether known or unknown, and whether bikers pull together to help others, no matter what age or illness, these bikers make a difference. And whereas Highway Masters Riding Club strives to achieve goals focused on family outings and supporting communities. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Pro Tem Jerry Ransome, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the Highway Masters Riding Club and thank them for their service. Thank you very much.
Can we just take one more picture with us right here?
Absolutely.
Here we go.
This is some of our area.
Okay. Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you all for coming tonight. And now, we have the Boys and Girls Club. Ms. Tammy, how are you tonight? I'm good. Thank you for coming tonight. Y'all, come on in here, come up here a little bit.
Come on back here.
Now, yesterday, we had a little presentation. Come on up, if you will. And we had a balloon release out at the Boys and Girls Club, which was very nice. And some of you made some presentations and that sort of thing. So we have another proclamation tonight, designating Boys and Girls Club Week. So we, the mayor and the city of Greenville, Texas, do hereby recognize the Boys and Girls Club Week, whereas young people of Greenville are tomorrow's leaders and may need professional youth services to help them achieve their full potential. And whereas Boys and Girls Clubs instill in our youth with the self-confidence to believe they can succeed at anything they put their mind to and stand at the forefront of efforts in the areas of Power Hour, Smart Moves, Healthy Habits, and Triple Plan. And whereas the Reese Davis Center and Kava Kids Boys and Girls Clubs ensure young people have a safe and supportive place to spend time and provide them with quality youth development programs. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Pro Tem Jerry Ransome, on behalf of the city of Greenville and the city council, do hereby proclaim April 8th through 12th as Boys and Girls Club's Week. Thank you very much. I was out there yesterday, and it's very heartrending. Here's your proclamation. And it's very heartrending to see what goes on. How many children were out there when you had the balloon release? Probably 150?
150 to 175, because that was over.
Tremendous, tremendous experience. So I got to speak to them about city government this summer when I was substituting for the mayor, and it was one of the most rewarding things I got to do.
Yes, working with them is very rewarding.
They kept asking me how old I was. I don't think they'd ever seen anybody that old before. Thank you all very much. Thank you for coming tonight. Absolutely. Get in here where everybody's seeing you. Can you come forward, follow up? Maybe Cody will be in the way.
Just one, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all very much. Okay. We now move to citizens to be heard. I guess I need to read this entire thing. Citizens are invited to address the council on topics not already scheduled for a public hearing. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by city staff and may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other force of response. Please give your name and address when you come forward. And one of the council members asked me if people could, and citizens to be heard, could speak on the Stangback project? And yes, you can if you'd like to, although there will be a public hearing for that sometime in the future. So are there any, anybody want to speak?
I think given.
I've got one, Mayor, and I didn't have to turn it in.
Okay, would you like to come forward?
Yes, sure.
I don't know if you need to state your name, but...
I will. Somebody can for me. Terry Driggers, 1596 County Road 3128. The shock factor first is, I want to thank this council, because in 20, 28th year in real estate, this is probably the only productive council I've seen try to work with water and sewer. I've talked to you, some of you individually about this, too. And the new sewer, the water at Monty Stratton, I've lived this project. I've lived Monty Stratton being a dirt road. My clients being the only clients that paid their third of the new Monty Stratton overpass, and we paid up. You know, I still live it daily, not against the Stangback project at all. I think it's great, but I think it needs to be done right. Last week, I tried to stay away from up here. I talked to some of you individually. Last week, I was shocked when watching it and having to hear a councilman ask for a master plan. A master plan that was not only done by Freezy Nichols, but also paid Kimberly Horn thousands upon thousands of dollars for individuals to be a part of that master plan with their own individuals. Today, again, years ago, I lived in that 99, 2000, when I first went to work for Charlie Patterson, watching people run out here on 1570 from another council and city manager who were going to build golf courses and set the world on fire. We go out, we buy four-inch lines that we can do nothing with, which you're fixing to replace into 12-inch line. You know, that's been fixed. I've already worked in condemnation there for the new four lanes from 66 to 1570. I want everybody to get the big picture from Monty Stratton to 1570. And not that I agree with anything Stangback said tonight, nothing, other than Abilwich is to the east, not to the west. And that money, that 14 billion, I think, during that, them hearings, because I sat through all of them, I was part of the Kinder Morgan Group at that time, was for not a 90-acre stretch of road. It was, and if you go back and you're going to look at your master plans, because I'll give some people master plans today. If the city can't provide you with them, I can, at any size. You pay dearly for them, as we did too. And you need them. We're now dealing with Garland power and life, and I'm not sure what council even knows is going on. I've received letters from their attorneys saying that all the landowners are in favor. I received letters today from attorneys representing five of the landowners that's not in favor, and I'm representing three to four right now that are not in favor, who claim never to be contacted by the city. That's a major issue, because that could have went down Monty Stratton, maybe not the smartest place. And it's being moved over on the grass farm, and I think that's all workable and doable, but it don't quite pass the smell's test. And this all started a year ago with the mayor's signature. That bothers us, you know? But again, guys, with the water and sewer and the stuff you're acting on now with the bond you just passed, if you'll stand back and watch, it's coming to you. It's all over you out there. You're just not aware of it. And I'm not going to stand here and tease you today. You've got to give away the farm to get the activity, because the activity's all over you. The water and sewer drew projects like this 90-acre deal, it's just like it's drawing other interests out there on the interstate that we all aren't talking about yet. But because of y'all, and because of the foresight, and getting it done, and making it happen, there's a whole new world of buyers out there. But again, I want to say thank you for that part, you know? But I think we need to look at the big picture from Monty Stratton back to 1570. I've met with your city engineers, and they tell me what they can push across to 1570 now. They're excited. There's thousands of acres out there, and yeah, I'm not going to stand here. I got 1,500 of it. I represent. So therefore, I have a real good feel who's standing inside them gates out there right now, doing things and looking at things. And it's because we're not giving the farm away, because we finally got water and sewer where they can get to it. And I appreciate you guys for that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the council? Okay. There are no public hearings on the agenda tonight. Ordinances, 7A. Consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing final payment of unit price construction contract for DN Tanks, placement installation of 5.5 mega gallon fairwell improvements.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and council members. City staff is requesting permission from council to make final payment on this very strong and handsome structure. Took better part of a year to build, but it, and we discovered some soggy territory that it was all taken care of. And James Belcher, the water treatment plant superintendent, and I are extremely pleased with the results. This facility in conjunction with other actions, other repairs and things that are going to happen in the near future at the water plant are going to really serve the city well. We did have two, two changes, two change orders. When we did discover a little bit of water, there was a little bit of seepage from the sedimentation basins, and that DN Tanks came in and sealed up those leaks in the sedimentation basins, cleaned them up, and they're back to pretty much shipshape now. This, as a matter of fact, this company DN Tanks is the subconsultant on our, subcontractor on our pressure contract, pressure project, and up on the hill by our water tower there on Center Point. So we are very happy to anticipate their work there, too, for two more tanks. Anyway.
For Mr. Wright? What's the pleasure of the council? Are your motions in second?
Second.
Although, please. Moving to the next item, 7B, consideration action of an ordinance authorizing final payment of the unit price construction contract with Canary Construction, Inc. for the Washington Street Water Project. Mr. Wright?
Yes, the retainage for this totals about $8,700, and this project is finished to our satisfaction. It replaces a 12-inch cast iron line on a port, about three-block portion of Washington Street, west of here, that was giving us quite a few problems. And it's all complete. We moved the water line to the South Parkway. They reconstructed the sidewalks and finished their punch list, and we're happy. So we recommend approval.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wright? Is there one's pleasure of the council? And Mr. Wright, while you're there, I think it might be good to tell us that we received some TOPPS awards for our water quality recently?
Yes, for the past four years running now, we have received, this is a voluntary program, and we're making good enough water to volunteer for it. And James Belcher and crew there is making the, some of the cleanest, clearest water in the state. We're one of just a small handful of water production, and we're very proud of that. Says a lot about our, about our treatment.
And certainly thank Mr. Belcher also on our behalf.
Sure will.
Okay. Moving right into resolutions. Consideration action of resolution pointing a member of the Greenville Board of Development, which is a committee comprised of Mr. Evans, Mr. Turner, and Mr. Money, who's the chairman of that committee, with your recommendation.
I guess I'll take that honor. Sean Franklin, if you would stand up. We're going to recommend Mr. Sean Franklin with great pride. And Mr. Franklin, again, thank you for accepting this. If you get elected tonight, you'll be up.
It'll be my pleasure.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you, Sean.
Was far and away the best person in the interview.
I understand. Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll raise the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Next one is, what's the place? Resolution 8B, consideration action of the resolution selecting a grant writer administrator in conjunction with the submission of an application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Community Development Block Grant, Fire, Ambulance Services, and Truck. Mr. Powell, you're already there.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This particular grant is a community development block grant. It's the first year for this particular one. It's called the FAST Grant, and it specifically targets communities with low to moderate income citizens. And so I think we're going to fit that very well. But it also, once again, it helps us alleviate a need of fire trucks. It specifically targets fire trucks, ambulances, and other fire-related service vehicles. So with that said, this first step will be just to select a grant writer. If you choose to do that tonight, they will help us develop this grant, write it, and then we will come back to y'all to actually have to approve, to submit the grant from that point. Any questions?
Sir, what's the pleasure of the council?
So what's the expected funding on this grant?
This grant has a minimum of $50,000 with a maximum of $500,000. So it can be, you know, it can be, we're obviously going to ask for the $500,000. But it'll be, it'll be up to the, their board to decide that.
Is there a motion? Was there a motion? Okay, item 8C, consideration action on a resolution accepting a state homeland security grant for radiological and chemical detection equipment.
Yes, this is another grant that became available recently. I don't know how many of you remember, but back in October of 2018, we participated along with the police department in a joint terrorism exercise that was statewide. And this simulated multiple attacks throughout the state. Ours happened to target L3. And during that exercise, we identified several areas where we can improve, if you will, especially when it comes to some of the detection equipment that we currently have. And so with that, we wrote up a request to the Department of Homeland Security. I think we ended up requesting about $85,000. From that, we got an approval for $68,961 with no matching requirement from us. So any questions? I will add that this will be, it'll be radiological detection equipment and unknown chemical detection equipment.
The value is just around $70,000.
Yes, sir, $68,961 to be specific.
So this is just to accept the funding, and then you'll come back to us with who wants to spend money on these things, or how does that work?
Actually, this will be approving both. Yeah. This, this grant was, it's an unusual grant for us, because I found out about it, not from any fault of ours, we were notified of the availability about a month ago. And after that, we were told we have, within the timeframe of this month, to get the grant approved and to perform the grant. So this moves very, very quickly, something we're not, usually it takes much longer than that for that to happen. So I apologize for not having this up before you sooner, but I didn't really have a choice in the matter, so.
Okay, is there a motion for approval? Go for approval.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8D, consideration action on resolution selecting a firm for administrative services for the city's 2019 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application Preparation and Project Administration awarded. Mr. Sims?
This is Mayor and council. This is what we, they used to call OPM, Other People's Money Night, so I think it helps out, doesn't it? We want to present to you a project that the Board of Development's been involved with right now. It's a, it's a real, a real project we've been working on some time. It involves road construction. And so what Board of Development would like to do is for the city make application to Texas Department of Agriculture for this grant. We hope to get a million dollars on a $1.3 million construction project. The road has to be done, can't do without it. So what Board of Development, what the company has said, that they're only coming if the road gets in. So, you know, they're wanting a guarantee, regardless of whether we win the grant or not. So the Board of Development, although they haven't voted on that, next week, we hope to get a vote out of the board that they will commit to putting the road in, whether or not we get grant assistance or not. So that'll be coming to the, council has to approve that anyway later down the road, so we'd have to come to y'all anyway to approve that. But then also, this, what you're looking at today is just the approval, I think it's the grant writer on this, who, there was a selection committee that has been, was met today on the request for qualifications and proposals. And the selection committee selected the grant writer to be trailer and associates. So we'd like for you to consider that for the grant writer for this. The grant writer will take all the responsibility of the administration of the grant. There are other fees involved with the grant writer if we win it, and the Board of Development will pledge to pay for those, so they don't come out of the city's fund. We'll handle that, too. So it's up for, any questions? A million dollars, sir. One million. We're hoping that we can get a million bucks, so.
Any other questions? Motion to approve? For second? Although, please. Okay. Moving around home to item 8E, consideration action on a resolution selecting a firm for engineering services for the city's 2019 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application Preparation and Project Administration. Again, Mr. Sims?
Yes, Mayor. Again, this is the same, same project. The grant process requires the selection committee to select a qualified engineering firm. They selected Hewitt Zollers, so Hewitt Zollers is up for you to approve. That's all I have, Sam.
Any questions? Go for approval? Second?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regarding the consent calendar, I'll present, we need to read it, the only thing on the consent calendar is the city council minutes, so I'll do that. Or any comments on the minutes in the consent calendar? Go for approval? Second. Okay, any city staff or city council? Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Appreciate it.
You got this thing out here?
Yes.
This was the, meaning I was assigned to go to, kind of remember of. This was the handout they gave us.
Everybody has it.
If you all have some time in your, your spare time, if you're going to get back in touch with me, of what you think points are, then I can take the next meeting, it'll be on May the 7th. I would appreciate it.
Are there any questions of Mr. Turner regarding this? Okay. Item 11, city council discussion and proposed agenda items. Are there any? Yes, Mr. Evans?
Mayor, I have four that I'd like to bring you up. And again, I've got a hard copy, so here I'll, you won't take specific notes, you can, maybe give it a good shake on, but I'll give you a hard copy. Number one, I request an item, and I requested this last time, and I realized we have the city manager out tonight, that's probably why it didn't come up. But I want to request an item to be placed on the next council agenda for the city manager or her desert need to make a summary presentation of the Freeze and Nichols Master Plan for the city of Greenville. I request that the summary highlight the reported need for east-west street access to the future four-lane farm-to-market 1570. The city spent approximately $40,000 to have this study done. It does not need to sit on a shelf collecting dust, especially with the current and future planned expansion of farm-to-market 1570 to four lanes. Number two, as part of the Freeze and Nichols presentation, I request a public update on the plans for farm-to-market 1570 becoming four lanes. Number three, I request an item to be placed on the next city council agenda for the city manager.
Number three, I request an item be placed on the next city council agenda for the city manager or designated to explain why the city of Greenville requested the Garland Power and Light line location be moved. Number four, I request an item be placed on the next city council agenda for Garland Power and Light to give us an update on the power line and the status of the required easements. And I repeat, the status of the required easements. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Evans, if you're, could you submit that also, your request to the city secretary, so she will think she was making notes. I know she's getting a note taken, but... Thank you. Are there any other issues to come before the city council for discussion, future agenda items? You have before you the board and commission minutes. Are there any ones that are up for a green will be applied and report? I suppose there are any questions on that. If not, if not, we will go into executive session. I don't believe we'll come out of the executive session with a vote.
Well, we need to take action on the meeting.
Well, we will be announcing the date for the public hearing in the tent of us. Yes, that's true. I don't know if that will require a vote.
Yeah, I don't require that.
We will be doing that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.